Good afternoon, the committee of the whole has to turn from recess and we're called back to order. We are at the point where we're having amendments. If you all will look at your drive, you'll find that we have four amendments. We'll begin with Senator Vice Speaker Tina Munro Barnes, ma'am.
Mr. Chair, I did have an amendment to change lines six to seven, page one. And it was to add in after 81,744.51 in fiscal year 2020 and include up to, the word up to, the phrase up to. But, Mr. Chair, if I may just be allowed, instead of saying 255,000, we just got an FYI during lunch from BBMR, Mr. Carlson, and that actual amount is literally supposed And because the amendment was already in, and we just got word from BBMR on that follow-up based on the questions earlier, we found out that at that actual amount is at 175,601.24 and not 213,000. The fiscal note, as earlier stated, Mr. Chair, was that there would possibly be up to 251,000, but that is not the case at this time. So instead of saying 251,000, change that amount to 175,601.24.
All right, Madam Vice, if you could just please read the whole amendment. My colleagues, if you look in the drive, you'll find that there was two amendments that are almost identical except for the amount. One was by Senator Peter Terly and one was by the Vice Speaker. All we're basically doing is merging them together and changing the amount. That's all we did. And if you can, Madam Vice, if you can read the amendment one time.
Right, so it would read in line six to seven, page one, to amend the bill to read, quotation, parentheses, open parentheses, 81,744.51 in fiscal year 2020, comma, and inclusion up to, and change from 251,000, we are changing it to 175,601.24 from the Safe Schools Initiative.
Any of my colleagues would like to speak to that amendment? There being none, Senator, Madam Speaker.
Is the up to still in there? If that's so, if I would ask the author to yield, to just explain why up to.
Madam Vice, will you yield to that?
In the beginning, Mr. Chair, the amount that was required by the main sponsor was at 213,000, at the original request was 213,703.24. When I looked at the fiscal note as provided by the administration, it read that there was a possibility up to 251,000. And it was recommended by the executive director from BBMR to say it would be easier for us to say up to, so that utilization would be there in the event. But even as we've got the latest information from the executive director, Mr. Chair, it is very important to know that if it doesn't cost that whole amount, then at least the Guam Police Department will have the utilization up to the amount that is existing today in record. So the new amount of 175,601.24 in the Safe Schools Initiative is the existing amount today. And they clarified it to us this afternoon. And I know, Mr. Chair, that I guess, right after this, I can ask that, a motion to include that information as provided to you also by the executive director.
Thank you. Speaker, does that suffice? Thank you.
Yes, so on the amendment, I don't have an objection to the amount. This is the amount that BBMR has clarified for us. Again, however, the total of this plus their current year appropriation brings them up to close to half a million dollars. And I'm concerned about that, because this is a program that really has no written parameters to date. Did they give to us the list of expenditures that they talked about giving to the Vice Speaker? Do we have that available, Mr. Chair? They said they were going to give us an outline of how they were going to spend.
That's correct. That's what the chief brought up during the, as a panel, that they'll provide us that update.
Do we have it?
No, I didn't get it yet.
Yeah, so that's my only concern. It's, you know, if we're going to get additional police officers, I have no objection, but that's not what we're doing. We're giving it to some, this program where he says he's got a program, but we haven't really seen it. It's not been implemented yet. And then we were told it might be spent on cars. And it's, you know, just notable that it's not going into the fund for the police vehicle revolving fund for, you know, vehicles and maintenance. And, you know, so I want to, I want to trust the chief that this is truly a priority, a necessary item that we're going to be spending this, you know, limited funds that we have on. But, yeah, I'm just concerned, you know, that we are here replenishing funds that have been taken out by transfer by the governor for places that are, you know, governor's office, Women's Bureau, from GPD. And I just think that, well, I want them to have the money, you know, this is doing, you know, we're going to reappropriate every time they take it out by transfer, it seems silly to me that they are even allowed to transfer out of that fund. So that's all, Mr. Chair. Otherwise, I support this amendment to limit the amount. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Madam Speaker. Does any of the colleagues like to speak to this amendment? Are there any objection to the amendment? There being none, amendment passes. We will now proceed to the amendment introduced by Madam Speaker.
Sure, Mr. Chair, this amendment is labeled TMT, line nine, page one, L9P1. So this would add one sentence to the appropriation, which would read, "The funds allocated and authorized in this section are not subject to Imago Hagen-Wahon's transfer authority." And that's because I don't want to do that in and out, you know, especially for GPD. It's either a priority or it's not. And so if we're going to make this statement that this is a priority and that what the chief needs, we're going to give him, then I, which is what we did in our budget laws, then I think we should, all of us in the government should stick to that as a deep priority. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Madam Speaker. Does any of the colleagues would like to speak to that amendment? There, Senator Brown.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I do rise in support of the amendment. I think it brings to light the issue that while we understand certainly the challenges in managing the administration of what they determine their priorities and obligations are, I think we'd all agree that ensuring that funds that are appropriated to the Guam Police Department are used by the Guam Police Department. I don't know too many residents these days in our community that feel safe or feel that we have enough comfort or response from Guam Police just by virtue of the lack of resources and attention. So certainly, I support the Speaker's amendment to be included in the bill. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Does any other colleague would like to speak to the amendment? There being none, are there any objection to the amendment? I see none. Amendment passes. Now we proceed to Senator Nelson, you have an amendment? Senator Nelson, majority, Peter?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. The amendment that I proffer is on line nine, page one, and it is labeled AB23-TCNL9P1. And it reads, "The Guam Police Department's operational expenses for the Guam Department of Education School Safety Partnership Program until fully expended." So, Mr. Chair, this is aligned with the statements that we received from the chief, that he did not mind that we made the appropriations more specific to the program. He did say that this money will be used for the school safety partnership program. And actually, we couldn't get, we did have some clarification on the school safety initiative, and it's not a special fund. It's, there's, we don't even know where that money is put, but we included it as a school safety initiative in our budget bill. And so the school safety initiative is aligned with the executive order that the governor issued in February 2019, which is the school safety program. And essentially, it's supposed to be a program that is partnered with GDOE to help address the issues within our schools to keep our students safe. And so that is why I proffered this amendment.
Thank you, Senator Nelson. Does any of my colleague like to speak to this amendment? Senator Blas, and then you'll be followed by Speaker Terly.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, the language of the amendment basically is for the Guam Department of Education's School Safety Partnership Program. I'm concerned with that language, is while it is a partnership with DOE, is it in fact the formal or legal name for that program, the Guam DOE's School Safety Partnership Program? And I guess that's the question for the author of the amendment, if she'd like to.
Thank you, Senator Blas. Senator Nelson, would you like to yield to that question?
It is a collaboration with the Guam Department of Education, with the Guam Police Department, under the Leon Guerrero Tenorio administration, through an executive order or a release that was issued on February 2019, that issued it as the School Safety Partnership.
Does that suffice, Senator Blas?
Well, I understand that it's school safety, but is it formally labeled the Guam Department of Education's School Safety? There may be a difference between the Guam Police Department School Safety Program and partnership with DOE. And what I'm concerned about is, we're sending it up to GPD, then it's going to transfer over to DOE, because, so that's my concern with that, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Chair?
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Yes, please, Senator Nelson, if you can make clarification.
If the good senator has an amendment to ensure that there's a collaboration with GPD and GDOE to address his concerns, I'm open to the amendment.
Senator Blas, do you, would you like to proffer an amendment to that verbiage, or?
Is it's for the School Safety Partnership Program, or School Safety Program in partnership with the Guam Department of Education?
You want to try that one more time, Senator Blas? How did you want to reword it? You want to start it out with School Safety Partnership Program with the Department of Education? Is that what you're saying?
The School Safety Program in partnership with the Guam Department of Education. That way, we know that it's going to GPD. Right now, the way it reads here, it could be conceived as it's going to GDOE.
Okay. So if you could just maybe write that down, and then we can run it through Senator Blas, just so we can get it right, so that nobody is.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Madam Speaker, did you have a, do you have any further questions on the amendment other than that one? Senator Blas?
No.
That was it? Madam Speaker, did you have a question? You'll be followed by Senator Tello.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was thinking when we were going through the bill earlier, that we were going to be specific here and remove the word words "operational expenses" and put instead, you know, these two specific funds or programs, which include the vehicle revolving fund. So I think that that should be included here. And then, of course, clarification of this other program. Like I pointed out earlier, there is a program by the name of Safe Schools Initiative Program. There's also a Safe Schools Program, I can't remember the rest of the words. And then the chief talked about a COPS program, but, you know, if this is the program, then that's fine, but I just want to, I want to be clear. But I was actually thinking, if we just end the sentence at "available for the Guam Police Department," period, take out operational expenses, so they can't use it for any other purposes except for those two funds, we're allowing them to use funds that have lapsed in the special, you know, those special categories. And I'm hoping that means that they would be restricted to those purposes, if we just put a period after Guam Police Department.
You wanted to just say, you didn't want to say the Guam Police Department until fully expended?
Yeah, that's fine, yeah, so delete the words. But anyways, yeah, I could put it in writing, but I would like to work with the sponsor of the amendment if, yeah, because otherwise, with this amendment alone, we're skipping the Police Patrol Vehicle Revolving Fund. We need to say that one also.
Sure, Mr. Chair, can I just get a quick recess? Because if we.
Make the changes.
Yeah, if we end the statement there, it doesn't say that they can't use it for operational expense.
Okay.
So let me, can I just get a quick recess?
If we can hold that recess, because Senator Tello wanted to ask a question, and it might be associated, so we don't recess, then we have to recess to reset again?
Mr. Chair, it's exactly what I had in mind, too, crossing out operational expenses and just using it strictly for this school safety.
All right, then what we'll do is we'll take a recess, so that my colleagues can reset their amendments, and we can close this up. All right? We'll take a short recess.
The Committee of the Whole has back to order. Senator Nelson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, first of all, I'd like to thank my colleagues for their kind patience while we work through some of the parameters of this amendment. So with that being said, I would like to withdraw the previous amendment and I would like to proffer another amendment, which is labeled A B C, A B two-three dash T C N L nine, L one I.
Are there any objections to withdraw the First Amendment of Senator Nelson? There being none, so ordered. Senator Nelson, please continue.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The amendment that I am proffering is on line nine, page one, and it reads, "The Guam Police Department provided that prior to expenditure which shall be consisted with this, consistent with the Safe Schools Initiative, the Guam Police Department shall first collaborate with the Guam Department of Education until fully expended, until funds fully expended." I think that's a typo. And to add, because there was some concern about the Police Patrol Vehicle Revolving Fund, and to add, the Guam Police Department is authorized to expend funds appropriated by this section from the Police Patrol Vehicle Revolving Fund for the purchase of police patrol vehicles.
Does any of my colleague would like to speak to that amendment? I see no hands. Are there any, Madam Vice?
I'm just trying to look for it, Mr. Chair, because I want to note that if, if, if this is what I'm looking at, I wanted to just make sure to allow legal to make any technical corrections if necessary. So I just want to look to see which one it is. I don't think I have it right now. Is that it?
It should read the same thing as the previous amendment. The only thing that is added at the end of the file name is the letter I capitalized. So Alpha Bravo two-three dash Tango Charlie, November Lima nine, Papa one, India.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for allowing me to look at the hard copy of the amendment and, and based on my concern in adding, making sure that legal counsel has provided that opportunity to make any.
Thank you, Madam Vice. Does any other colleague would like to speak? If there are none, are there any objection to, or would you like to close, Senator Nelson, on this, or, none, okay. Are there, if there are no objection, none, amendment passes. My colleagues, we have completed the, all the amendments. Senator Pito Terlay, you have a motion you wanted to make?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I move that Bill number twenty-three thirty-six C O R, as amended in the Committee of the Whole, be placed on the third reading file with the recommendation of the Committee of the Whole. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
On that motion, are there any objection? That it be placed on the third reading file, hearing motion carries. My colleagues, we will recess so that we can bring the next, the panel back in and the Department of Culture in so we can move on to the next bill. All right? Are they ready? Committee of the Whole is called back to order. My colleagues, we will now entertain Bill twenty-five dash thirty-six C O R, as amended by the Committee on General Government Operations, Appropriation, and Housing, introduced by Jose Pito Terlay and co-sponsored by Vice Speaker Tina Rose Munia Barnes, an act to amend, Section six-three one oh three point one of Article one, Chapter sixty-three, Title five, Guam Code annotated, relative to the stipend of the civilian conservation reservists at the Department of Culture. And as the panel, Mr. Byrne and Mr. Carlson and Mr. Guerrero, that you are still under oath, and I ask the Sergeant Arms to please swear in the additional panel from the Department of Culture.
Please raise your right hand. Under penalty of perjury, do you all affirm that any information you provide today, whether it be verbally, electronically, and in writing, be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God? Mr. Chair, they're under oath.
Thank you, thank you, Sergeant Arms. My colleagues, I will read again the rules of engagement. We have two rounds of questions for the panel, which each senator allotted five minutes for questions, not including responses. To be consistent with the understanding rules, time to speak may not be yielded from more than one member to another. A member who used the member's time on a question used all that member's time on that question and may not later speak, even if all the time yielded were, was not used. That's in Section one point zero-two D three, understanding rules. Okay, and after the completion of the second round of questions, panels will be excused and to call upon for the next bill to discuss. Amendments will be discussed after the two rounds of questions. Materials for the Committee of the Whole are in the shared Google Drive folder. Proposed amendment must be submitted in writing to the clerk. Amendments not in writing will be called out of order. And after we complete the amendments and the bill, the next bill will be introduced. I will now ask Senator Jose Pito Terlay to make his opening statement to Bill twenty-five dash thirty-six.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much. Sorry I had an urgent call, that's why I had to go outside. Mr. Chair, I want to thank you very much and also my colleague for the opportunity to speak on Bill twenty-five thirty-six. And this is another piece of legislation. And this is another piece of legislation designed to help our island improve its public safety, increase morale at a public safety agency, and reduce the overtime on our, on our agencies, and our agencies need to spend to maintain its ability to meet its mandate with the diminishing funding. Mr. Chair, Bill 2535 or 36 will increase the stipend paid to our conservation reserve officers that monitor illegal fishing, hunting, and the like. They also ensure that wildlife and marine life are taken in a humane and approved manner as allowable under the Guam law. This increase in stipend is already paid for by an agreement with NOAA that can be verified by the director who's here right now with us, the Director of Agriculture and other federal agencies, as long as we meet the mandates of the agreement. The Director of Agriculture and the administration are fully in support of this measure, and I pray that you and my colleague will be too. I look forward to the passage of these measures so we can increase the stipend of these individuals and recruit more volunteers to protect our island wildlife and marine life. And I want to thank you again for the opportunity to speak and look forward to the debate on this legislation. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, and I would like to move Bill 2536 to the third reading file.
All right. Senator Trelai, your motion is so that we can hear it in the Committee of the Hall. Correct?
That's correct, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. Are there any objections? None, thank you. Senator Blahard, do you have any questions for the panel on this bill? None? Senator Trelai, do we?
Sadhusmasi, Mr. Chair, and good afternoon to those who are here. Thank you for coming back. It's good to see you, Madam Director, and of course, one of your, your best at agriculture sitting next to you. I appreciate it. You know, Madam Director, you know that the cost on this, by increasing it to $500, stipend from $250, is going to cost the agency additional funding. I believe it was mentioned that you'll probably go as far as, well, I'll let you answer that question. How are you going to deal with the additional cost to this?
Thank you for that question, Senator. The first round of funding for the stipends is made available to us through grant funding, but through our conversations, negotiations, and then agreements with NOAA Law Enforcement, they have agreed to, should this law pass, or this bill pass into law, they have agreed to reimburse the costs that we're paying out for the stipends, so that the fund would then become self-supporting.
Okay, that sounds good to me, and I thank you for ensuring that this bill does more than just a piece of paper, but actually funds, funds it as well. I appreciate all the hard work you're doing over at the agency, and thank you so much.
Thank you, Senator.
Not at this time.
Thank you, Senator Brown.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to follow up with the Director. I mean, do you currently have any civilian volunteer conservation officers?
Yes, we do, ma'am. We were able to select and identify initially thirteen, one resigned, two are on deployment, and we have actively been working with ten reservists.
And with the funding that you said will be covered should this bill pass into law, how many would you be able to get all together with regards to what funding you have available?
I'm sorry, Senator, I couldn't hear this.
Do you know with regards to what funding you have available, how many additional conservation officers you can add? Do you have a total of what that could be, in addition to what you already just relayed to us?
No, not any additional at this time.
Okay, but at least we'll be able to sustain your current numbers at the $500 rate?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Madam Vice, do you have any questions for the panel?
Just a comment, just a comment. First of all, I want to thank the Director and the panel up here this afternoon and the conservation officer. I do want to say that this, this, the intent of this bill, from moving it from 250 per month to 500, just puts in line the other reserve units that was to be matched from the Guam Police Department, civilian voluntary police reserve, and I think it's really important for that, and just hearing, and, and match that 500 stipend if, if this bill were to pass into law.
Through the conversations we've had with them, yes, that is the intention, and then once the bill passes, or should it pass into law, it will be sent up for review and approval in DC. But the primary office that we're working with out of Hawaii is absolutely in full support of it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's really important to hear and restate it again, and I just want to thank the good author, Senator Pedo Trelai, for giving me the opportunity to be his co-sponsor on this bill again, just bringing it up to parity with our other law enforcement. So, thank you, Director Munia Brecht, for making sure that this gets facilitated. Sadhusmasi.
Thank you, Madam Vice Speaker. Senator Manish, none. Senator Perez, do you have any question on this, for the panel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good afternoon to the panel. Yes, so I'm just looking over the committee, committee report, and it mentions that in the fiscal note, that the budget, the current budget did not anticipate this, the additional cost, and so just a question for Director Brecht. Would NOAA reimburse the costs, this initial cost, in addition to future costs? So, the additional $30,000?
I'm sorry, Senator, do you mean, would they reimburse funds that have already been paid out?
So, yeah, so if we enacted this bill, right, and so the cost would be about $30,000, well, if you subtract what's left of the fiscal year, would they cover that cost once upon enactment in addition to future fiscal years?
From the point that the bill becomes law, and should, when it's gone through review within DC and approval, they will start reimbursing at that point forward. Yes.
Okay, great. And I guess for the cost itself, I guess this question's for Mr. Carlson. Is there, you know, monies available that would help provide the initial funding for this?
If I may, for Mr. Carlson, the, the funding for this is provided through a grant received through the Coral Reef Conservation Program, so it's not out of Gov Guam coffers, but it's federal funding.
Okay, so then it's fully covered then?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. That's all my questions, thank you.
Thank you, Senator Perez.
Thank you. Senator Moynihan, do you have any question to panel? None. Senator Duanez, do you have any question? None. Senator Torres, do you have any questions, ma'am?
Yes, I just wanted to get clarification. Chelsa, the, the stipend is something that's in, that's supposed to cover uniforms and stuff, that is in addition to the $500, or is it inclusive?
No, so the way the law was written, initially it said that they would receive an allowance which covers uniforms and equipment. Senator Trelai's bill would amend that wording so that it says for, I believe, for compensation for services provided, basically, which would help NOAA then approve the reimbursement for these, because they cannot reimburse for, for uniforms and equipment, but they can reimburse for the services that they're providing in support of federal statutes.
Okay. I'm pleased to read that it's, that this is really a program with NOAA, and it's going to help with our marine conservation and, and monitoring, which I think was one very big gap in terms of protecting our coral reefs, our lives, our fish stock, and responsible use of the shoreline and the reef system. So, I'm very happy to support this measure, and I appreciate your collaboration with NOAA to not only use up the grants that are available now, but to have that be a perpetual funding source for this type of, of effort. So, I just want to thank you for that and note that for most of us who were concerned about the marine preservation, ask measures on your part to ensure that the preserves and all the efforts that go into the marine conservation and protection are further enhanced by this effort. So, I fully support it. I just had a question about the stipend, which I, I think I understand now.
Thank you for that support, Senator Torres. I do have to say, though, that it was our conservation officers, especially Lieutenant Regario here, who kept pushing NOAA to approve this project, because initially they said no. It was because they, these aren't full-time government employees, and then it was one reason after the other, but he just kept coming back repeatedly to, to show them the light, or that there's an opportunity here.
And I hope that you're able to, in working with NOAA and the conservation effort, I hope that you're able to expand it to greater monitoring and enforcement efforts that includes the use of watercraft and those sorts of things that will allow you to better monitor the uses of our oceans and our shoreline. So, hopefully that's another tier that you can chase down, because I think we don't have enough equipment to really be effective in terms of monitoring and catching and, and finding, you know, these individuals who violate our laws. So, thank you very much, and keep up the good work.
Thank you, Senator.
Madam Majority Leader, Senator Nelson, do you have any questions for the panel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon, Chelsa, and good afternoon, Officer, sorry, what is your name?
Richard Regario, Lieutenant.
Okay, I think we've met before.
He speaks fondly of you, Senator. You helped them with the truck.
I wanted to ask, with the short staffing pattern that we're seeing, especially the depletion of, it's almost as if we're not paying enough attention to our conservation officers' full-time capabilities within the Department of Agriculture, and I want to commend the efforts that you're doing to kind of level out the responsibilities by creating this reserve force. I'm sorry, but I did not read in the committee report thoroughly what was said about how they would be compensated for the amount of hours that they work, so, you know, I'm thinking usually we drill, if you're in the military, we drill two days out of the month, and then they receive that just compensation. Are we anticipating them to work more than 80 hours, and, and then that would be equitable to $500, or what, how do we measure the, the performance for pay?
The, the reservists are scheduled throughout the weekend. They accrue up to 42 hours a month for the, in payment for the compensation. What I can add to that, though, is that those reservists who have been selected, a large portion of them, I would venture to even say almost all of them, are really excited about the work that they do, and they even try to put in more than the 42 hours, knowing that they'll still only be compensated at the amount that they're supposed to receive.
Okay, and then because this is a part of a marine initiative to protect our coastal areas, also, does Department of Agriculture need additional funding sources as we've, as we look toward the budget, and to see whether you're able to sustain with boats and jet skis for this purpose? Because I believe there was at one point, right, there, because it, I believe, because you won't have all the tools and resources, right? And so, I don't know if you have that available to you, or is this something that we need to also consider moving forward?
We would absolutely welcome any further support, especially for equipment, but more than that, we would need additional bodies. I'd take a body over a boat any day.
Right, okay. And so, moving forward, the inventory that you have now, what access do you have to, what tools do you have that allow you to monitor the coastal areas?
Right now, we have one vessel, the RHI, or actually, I'll let Lieutenant Regario speak to that.
The, right now, serviceable operational is the RHI Zodiac. That's going right now. The Boston Whaler is in for repairs for an overhaul that should be due in about four to six weeks, hopefully. The only issue that we're really looking at right now is to get the chart plotters for those vessels. We do have two jet skis, right, for the more inner part of the coastal lines, but if I would have to say what we really need help for, really, it's going to be for the, the marine equipment, right? We do have it, right, but we, to their credit, NOAA, after we get through this process and we reevaluate the JA agreement as it stands now, because we had to catch up because we were in, of course, the COVID-19, so they're going to visit the possibility of getting us a new vessel, but I'm not even going to table that here. What I want to table really is more operational cost to get all the nuts and bolts type stuff to get us going, right, to get us safely in the water. Most of it right now is that chart plotter, right, that I'm trying to, and to revamp and recondition all our, our trailers right now, and, because I need to do a lot more night enforcement out there in the coastal line, because there, there are incidents and reports of the, the overfishing, and then we got that SCUBA law, right, and then, of course, the MPAs are being hit at night. So, we're very, like you said, with the, the Director said, with the manpower, we're looking at that task right now, but hopefully maybe we can, right, and with our internal, within our own structure right now, what we have available as far as manpower and funding, the possibility of four or five more bodies, if it stays intact with what's happening internally with our manning.
Thank you, LT. So, right now, with the SCUBA law, you said it mandated, it allows Department of Agriculture an additional two bodies, full-time bodies?
Yes, Senator.
And have you filled those positions?
We're working with DOE on that process. There was an open recruitment. They received several, several, several applications that have been reviewed and earned. They can give us a final listing.
Okay, and how long will that take, Mr. Byrne?
Thank you for asking. We actually just extended, they, they, DOE, Department of Agriculture requested that we extend the period for, so that they could fully test these employees, and we've just agreed to extend that period. And, but they didn't ask for any particular period, so we're waiting for Department of Agriculture to tell us when their testing is complete.
So, tomorrow? Just kidding. Okay, very good.
Tomorrow will work.
Okay, yeah, I just want to make sure that we're also doing our part, right? So, as we approach this budget, we want to talk about these things to come into the light, otherwise we'll never know. And so, thank you, Madam Director, for everything that you're doing, and LT, for the outstanding work that you're doing with the limited resources that you have. I really feel for you guys, you know, and I want to commend the hard work that you do preserving our natural resources and our habitat in our island with the little people that you have, and so hopefully we can advocate for you as the upcoming budget, and, and remember these moments where we discussed openly about some of the challenges you have. Thank you, Senator. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Nelson. Madam Speaker, do you have any comments, questions you'd like to pose as a matter?
Yes, thank you, Hafiday Director and LT. The, so this, when the, the bill provides compensation now instead of, for what it used to be to defray the cost of maintenance of equipment and uniforms. So, first of all, the $500 per month in compensation, is that the equivalent of their current compensation?
No, ma'am. The reservists are currently compensated at $250 a month.
But are they compensated in addition to equipment and uniforms? Or, so like no compensation, no pay? Are they getting both? Are they getting this 250 stipend for equipment and uniforms and compensation?
No, as the law was written, the $250 is their compensation, and although it was written to cover the cost of uniforms and equipment, it, it's really realistically for the hours that they've put in.
Okay, so, all right, so we're changing the amount to 500. So, I wanted to ask Mr. Byrne, does this $500 amount, is that, how does that equate to the other law enforcement reservists pay or compensate?
It's the same, Madam Speaker, as the police force.
Okay, so the five, GPD makes five. What about, hold on, DOC has a reserve force also?
No, no, it doesn't.
What about Hark? What about Park Rangers? Is this different from them? I think we just set their compensation at 250?
Frankly, I, I don't remember that one.
And, okay. All right. Okay, so I have no objection to going up to the 500, especially if NOAA is going to reimburse that. That's excellent. And so they are just going to take care of on their own their equipment and uniforms then. Is that right?
That'd be correct, ma'am.
All right. Except you've got some equipment that you said from other grants that have been provided. Okay. Currently, the 250 was being paid from local funds?
No, it's paid from a federal grant.
Okay, so, all right. So this actually should have no impact on your budget except, right?
Yes.
To increase the amount that you're getting reimbursed?
Yes.
From NOAA. Okay, great. All right. Okay, that sounds good. The only, the only, you know, I guess we could, would be more ideal is if we were increasing the number of officers as opposed to just staying the same. Is that possible? Or were, did you consider that? Like continuing with the 250 and then getting more officers, or that was not one? Or any other way to get more officers from NOAA?
If there's a way, we'll find it.
Yeah. Okay, well, I want to thank you for your efforts thus far, and it looks like a, a good deal unless, Mr. Byrne, did you have any other comment on this arrangement? Is this, looks like the best way to go for us here?
I think the only comment, Madam Speaker, is I, I heard the director explain why the word "compensation" was used. Unfortunately, sometimes that's used in the connotation of a taxable amount, which is why we generally call these, these payment stipends. But I did hear the director explain why it was used, and, and we'll work with that.
Okay. All right. Okay. Thank you, Sisios Masi.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Senator Clinton, the Oversight of Agriculture.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No questions for the panel. I just want to say I support the measure, and I believe we should always support the Department of Agriculture the best we can, as well as its conservation officers, who are spread extremely thin as their jurisdiction is not only over the entire land of Guam, it also encompasses the surrounding waters. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Clinton. Senator Pito, do you have any questions or comments for the panel on your bill?
No question, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to congratulate the Director of Department of Agriculture for being so active and making sure that we give the Department of Agriculture the, the needed resources that they need. And I mentioned last time that I'm working on another bill regarding decriminalization. And I want to close this, Bill 502536OR is part of a plan to build a reservist program to each, at each of our public safety agencies.
Senator Pito, we're not closing yet.
I'm doing, I'm working on my closing statement, Mr. Chair.
Oh.
I thought we were going to end this. I thought everybody's done already.
No, we got one more round, Senator.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
All right. Do you have any other comments you wanted to comment before we, we proceed? One more round. Hopefully, there's no more questions. Senator Blas, do you have, you're, you're on your second round.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Madam Director and Lieutenant, for being here. Question I have, and you, you said that this is as a result of a NOAA grant and, but then you also caught, said something about the, the expenses are reimbursed. And this is, but this is a grant program, right?
It's from two different grants. So there's a NOAA Coral Reef Conservation Program grant, and that's what's initially funding this project to develop Guam's conservation reservists. But then our conservation officers have a cooperative agreement with NOAA Law Enforcement Section, and that's what reimburses the expenses that our conservation officers incur when they're enforcing NOAA's federal mandates.
Okay, simplifying, we have Grant A and Grant B.
Yes.
Right? So, you go out and the guys do the work, and they do this, and then they get expenses as a result of this, that you use Grant B to pay for. Then you got Grant A that reimburses Grant B?
Yes. To, well, so if Grant B is the Coral Reef Program, that's used to cover the, as the grant was written, stipends. But then Grant A, if this is NOAA's law enforcement, said that they cannot reimburse stipends. They can reimburse compensation for efforts and for work, not for uniforms or equipment. So NOAA Law Enforcement has, Grant A has agreed to run this further up the chain to DC to approve, because at their level, they've already approved it. They think it's a great project, and they will reimburse the, the stipend slash compensation for Grant B.
So, how long is this grant period, or the grants?
It's a two-year grant.
With the option to renew every two years, or is there, is there going to eventually be a cost share by the government?
No, there's no cost share from the government, but the grant would have to be resubmitted as a new proposal. There's no option to renew. Each, each, actually, well, each fiscal year is a new grant cycle for the Coral Reef Conservation Program. So this technically could be resubmitted as an additional project. But the idea here is that with NOAA Grant A reimbursing it, it then becomes repetitive on its own because our cooperative agreement with NOAA is a mutually beneficial relationship that both we and they look to continue each year.
Okay. My concern is, then there has to be somebody that's always on top of Grant B.
I'm sorry?
Then somebody's always got to be on top of Grant B, because Grant B is that one that you've got to apply every, every two-year cycle?
Um, we don't, we weren't actually looking to renew it. Once we, the idea, when they first wrote the grant proposal, was that they would start this, or we would start this conservation program, and then the government of Guam would take over and start funding it. But it was through working with our conservation officers and the NOAA law enforcement that we realized we could have NOAA reimburse the cost for this program and then help it become kind of repetitive funding on its own.
Okay, well, that will work for at least the next couple of years, but then the, the third year, what my concern will be is then, then we would have to increase your, your, your budget and then get reimbursed from that, reimbursed for it? Because you says that you, you're, what you don't want to do is, you don't want to reapply for this grant, right?
You mean the Coral Reef Conservation Grant?
Grant B, right? See, eventually, that's going to become a Guam expense, but to be reimbursed by NOAA again.
Well, if this passes into law now, it would start the reimbursements now, not at the end of the grant cycle.
Understood, but that's recognizing that you already have a grant program that actually gives you the seed money for that, right?
Yes.
But two years down the road, you're, then you're, that, that, okay, that, that tree's going to be chopped down, and you got, we got to plant a new seed, new tree, right?
No, um, once the-
You're saying no, but your guy's saying yes.
What, I'm sorry, let me, no, the, the funding that reimburses the account, that doesn't have to be reapplied for. That's the NOAA funding.
I understood. But the funding that you're getting your money from right now?
Yes.
Okay, and your plan is not to reapply for that grant, right?
It wasn't anticipated, no.
No, which, but they, but the anticipation was that the government of Guam was going to then bore that expense, on, on the recognition or, or the presumption that there's going to be a reimbursed, reimbursement?
When the grant was first written and it was assumed or presumed that the government of Guam would take over the expense, there was no anticipation of the reimbursement. That came at a later point.
That came at a later point?
Yes.
But now, you got the reimbursement. I, I want to get in at Chelsea's, yeah, you've got the money, because you've got two different grants. One provides you the, the seed money, the other one provides you the reimbursement.
Yes.
Okay. Down the road, one of them is gonna, is, is no longer going to be funded federally, it's going to have to be funded locally.
No, Senator, Senator-
How's it going to work? Because you, which one is not going to?
The NOAA reimbursement would be continuous. It doesn't stop after one cycle.
But you just finished saying earlier that there, you don't anticipate reapplying for the grant. What grant is it that you're not going to reapply for?
For the Coral Reef, the CRCP grant. But the joint of the JEA grant, well, it's not really a grant, it's a cooperative agreement.
Yes.
But the JEA cooperative agreement would still continue, and that funding account would still be established there to pay out the stipends, and then the next cycle of the stipends are used again, it'll get reimbursed again.
So you, you, you plan on recycling this one?
Yes.
That's what you want?
Yes.
Not with, but, but no anticipation that there may be something extraneous that's going to, that's going to add into that fund, in, in, into those costs?
When we figure out what that is, we will absolutely do that.
Okay.
We never really stopped looking for money just because there's some of it there.
I understand. Okay. Thank, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Blas. Senator Teller, no questions. Senator Adda, do you have any questions? Senator Brown, one question?
I just want to note, Mr. Chair, and I know when we do deal with the budget, I mean, there's always limited resources, but it's definitely in this area that a little more money that's invested by our local government as well can make a tremendous difference. I mean, it was almost 24 years ago when I championed through the legislature the creation of the Marine Preserves, and I certainly appreciate all the efforts that conservation officers have put forth. But even then, the amount of money that was appropriated for them to just get basic equipment that was brought up by some of our other colleagues was very limited. I actually appropriated money out of my budget to provide them equipment all the way down to the bullets that they needed to put in their gun. And I just don't think it's fair, considering the work that they do in law enforcement to assist protecting these resources in our community, that they always get shorthanded. I'm sure the same can be said for GPD and other areas of law enforcement, but I particularly think that providing just a little more resources to conservation is multiplied many times over. Same, I know when the, the bill does eventually come up as well for the park rangers. I mean, we have two park rangers for the entire island, similar situation. You know, we're depending on the dedication of these officers to do their job, but I think in all fairness, and, and thank you too to the director and your people for pursuing these grant opportunities, because in some cases, including environmental, if it wasn't for the federal government, we'd have no program. And I don't think that speaks well. We can throw millions of dollars to other components here in our government and not blink an eye, and it's like putting a dot of water. I mean, it disappears. But a few extra thousand here, or even more than that certainly would, would make a big difference. And I hope that as we look at the budget, again, while I know everything is a demand, I think just putting a few extra dollars can definitely make a difference. I think we've already seen the work. They've demonstrated their capability of what they're able to do with such limited resources. What more if that can be magnified just a little more to provide protection to our natural resources, that our people, and certainly our younger generation coming up, certainly continue to value more and more. So I just wanted to, to put those comments forward and thank Chelsea and her team at Department of Agriculture for the work that they do. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Brown.
Thank you, Senator Brown.
Senator Amanda, do you have any comments, questions for the panel?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I don't have any questions at this time, but I'd like to state for the record my support for the bill, my appreciation to the Department of Agriculture for doing the work to find funds to allow this to happen, for allow us to do, to do this work for you. So I appreciate the time that you've put into this to, to support our conservation officers, and I'm glad to be a part of this to help in any way.
Thank you, Senator Shelton.
Senator Parrish, do you have any comments or questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I also want to register my gratitude and support for this bill, and I really thank, you know, their, I guess, ingenuity in finding resources to do this. And I think this would definitely support the efforts, the enforcement efforts, especially with the SCUBA fishing ban that was passed last term. And, you know, I do appreciate all the efforts. And I guess a question is, you know, has there been any enforcement action thus far with that?
For the SCUBA ban, you mean, ma'am?
Yes.
As it stands right now, ma'am, like we spoke earlier about the vessels, it's very hard for us right now at night, especially at night. And I won't send my men out at this point because we don't have the chart plotter. And we are going, as we perceive for, we are looking into the funding and getting the requisition out for that. We're reviewing that right now. That's a total of maybe anywhere nine to 10,000 for both vessels, right? That may not include just the installation. So until such time, I get the extra bodies, and then the, my reservists are all ramped up with the final training that we're going through, and that the vessels are compliant, as far as I'm concerned, as far as officers' safety and survival, especially at night, will be enforced. But I would honestly say at this point in time, right now, we don't have the complete safety resources as far as the vessels to go out properly, monitor the, the Marine Preserve, and not just the Preserve, but the, the whole coastal area as far as the fishing on SCUBA.
Thank you for that response, and I do appreciate the, the efforts that you have done thus far. Sisios Masi, and, you know, you're definitely looking at that, at the budget cycle. So, thank you.
Thank you. Senator Moilen, do you have any questions or comments?
I'm in support of this measure. I want to thank the director and the panel for their time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Moilen.
Senator Duenis, do you have any comments or?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And certainly during the public hearing, we supported this, and wanted to thank Agriculture for the efforts. One, one thing we didn't do is talk about what, what current manpower you have and what this will do in terms of just the numbers of officers that you would increase by, in order to be able to do this, or is this simply just making it more attractive because of the stipend would be, you know, more significant?
Well, right now, we have 10 active reservists, Senator, so it's not necessarily about making it more attractive. They were there, willing to serve even when they knew they were getting less. And as Lieutenant Regario and I were talking about, that I shared a little bit earlier, there, most of them are really excited about the work that they do, and they're willing to put in more than the required 42 hours, knowing that they're only getting paid for the 42.
And what is the makeup generally? Is it folks who have retired and kind of have that law enforcement background anyways, or young folks just looking for something to enhance their, their abilities going forward maybe in this field? What, what's, what's the makeup usually of, of the reservists?
They're actively working, most of them, but I'll let Lieutenant Regario talk about that.
So thank you for that comment, Senator. And yes, when we made this election, we blended it, right? So we do have some young individual, young adults, right, that did graduate from the GCC Belaya Program.
Oh, nice.
Right, the basic law enforcement. I do have some veteran officers, right, the, a couple of marshals, GPD as well. I do have a, an active duty 36th Security Force with us as well. So in terms of, when we do the task work and we start to hopefully open up, I mean, 68 positions, like I said, I spoke earlier, within our budget means that's there already, right, I do, I do want to select from those reservists as well, all right, because they're, they have proven. And some of the veterans, like I said, with the marshals, the GPD guys, they, they, they want to stay with GPD and Marshals, and we know that, you know, we're, we're brothers in arms, right? But as far as the young adults that we do have that are in the program and are really putting in the extra time and effort, I'm hoping that the director and deputy director does, we are going to have a, a set of discussions, right, as far as what is available within my budget, all right, to get me those bodies, so I can ramp up not only the, as I ramp up the reserve program to get our permanent classified task organization in check. So yes, if that happens, or not if, when it happens, and we do get those positions and get ready to be announced, there is an order meritless, of course, right, and we'll be first tapping into those young individuals that we have that are, get to go and get them into ours, into the conservation program.
Thank you, Mr. Regario. And I, you know, folks watch sessions, so I kind of ask questions sometimes, so we can really let- questions sometimes, so we can really let the public know, you know, how the value of programs such as this. And same thing, when I was at Department of Youth Affairs, it was AmeriCorps and other volunteers. That became our hiring pool, because they became familiar with the operations, they really loved the job, and there are some of the employees that stay, you know, a long time and maybe even retire in the department. So I just wanted to highlight the fact that it's a very smart move. This stipend increase is well-deserved, and, you know, the people of Guam can be well-served by you having a kind of a training regimen, really. And then also, you have your senior officers, you know, retirees that probably just need something to do to supplement their income, and now you've got the best of both worlds, because you've got all this experience, and you've got these young up-and-comers. So I just wanted to once again highlight the value of this program and appreciate what you guys are doing. So, Sisus Mossi and Ms. Shelton, when you branch, you're doing a great job up there. Thanks.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Senator Duanez. Senator Torres, do you have anything further? None? Senator Nelson, do you have anything further to comment or question?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to the director and Eltir Regario for the hard work that they do. And, Mr. Chair, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but as we heard earlier, they need vessels also to ensure that they're able to enforce the mandate of the scuba ban. And so if we can diligently look for a certain appropriation to assist them into getting them the tools and resources they need to perform their duties as mandated by law, that would greatly go a long way, especially to protect our, I don't know any other way to say it, the fish is in the sea. So thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Nelson. We'll take a look at their budget. The OFP will be looking at their budget, and we can also ask Senator Duanez to assist with his boat, you know, we can help them out with the vessels. There's quite a few of us that have that. Senator, Madam Speaker, do you have any questions or comments you'd like to post to the panel?
Yes, well, I too wish that the transfer had gone to them, so that they could use it for those purposes. It's, I remember the mayor of Maritza, at least three years ago, very distraught, telling me about, you know, the nighttime fishing in the preserves, and, you know, it's very important to them that the fishermen of Maritza were being denied fishing in these areas, and yet people, you know, they thought from other places were coming in by boat and taking fish out. So I do hope that that can be addressed as soon as possible. I just want to confirm whether using NOAA reimbursement changes the activity that these reservists can perform, or, you know, is it a local versus a federal activity that they're going to perform? I think that was some of the issues for the regular officers, is that right, or not? I don't know. If you could explain that and just make it clear on the record, whether this reimbursement by NOAA is going to change what you, we could use, the reservists could do or not do.
Not at this time, Senator, but I think Lieutenant Regario would like to speak on that.
I'll comment, yes. For that NOAA portion, for the reimbursement, they would have to do the priorities, they have three priorities, which is the Endangered Species Act, the MMPA, that's the spinner dolphins, and the Lacy Act. So what we have, what we're doing is that on the JEA account, we have our own lockbox already. That's what the director was speaking about, all right? So that in the event, because the other, it's not just the marine that I'm very concerned, watershed area, and that goes with the seashore protection plan and all that, but anyway. So I do have to, is our concentration with the reserve program. The other thing, which is just as important, right, is terrestrial site, and we all know, right, with the poachers, with the illegal hunting type methods that they use down there with the slash burning, right, and trying to get most of, some of our operations planned into that area. So we do, we are planning to set aside, so when they do do our local mandates on the terrestrial site, right, then that, when they get, when that stipend needs, or the compensation is to be paid, it'll come out of that funding, not from the JEAR, J lockbox account that predominantly is for the marine preserve, I mean, excuse me, for the execution priorities under NOAA.
All right, so, but nothing, it won't prevent them from helping to regulate the marine preserves versus those three federal acts that you described?
Not at all, ma'am, not at all.
All right, okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd just like to reiterate again my support for this measure and encourage all of my colleagues to support the measure as well, and say that I'm looking forward to support also during the budget process, and looking forward to working with the budget chair on ensuring that the Department of Agriculture is funded properly and that the conservation officers have the funding they need to be able to hire more conservation officers and get more equipment. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Clinton. My colleagues, that's the last round for questions. I'm looking at the amendment, I'm going to ask the panel to, you are to be excused, for the panel to be excused, and then I will, are you going to ask a question, or are you going to make a motion?
Just at least one question, Mr. Chair, if you don't mind.
Senator Peter?
This is not going to be my closing statement. And this is very important, because I attended the last cycle graduation, graduating ceremony at the Department of Agriculture, and I saw that there are people up there that are working in law enforcement agencies, and I know that they are certified post. So I just wanted to ask the director, are you going to require, are the reservists going to be required to be certified as post?
Absolutely.
Okay, so I think the attendance at the graduation ceremony is about 12 people, I'm not sure, about 12 people, and most of them, I would say, are law enforcement officers. And I know one of my grandkids is a graduate there, and I know several of them are post-certified already. So I'll be working on that, and also, I talked to you about decriminalization, I'm working on that also, and I'm going to be talking to Lieutenant Regario and yourself regarding, you know, to draft up the bill on that one. So whatever assistance that you need for this body to help you out with some of the things that you want to be preparing on the programs, we are happy to support you on that one.
Thank you, Senator Shalit.
Thank you, Senator Peter. Now that all, we've completed two rounds, I'd ask the panels to be excused. Thank you for your participation from the Department of Agriculture and the others. Just have a seat outside, and I'll see you in a little bit. My colleagues, as the panel are leaving, looking at the drive for amendments, there are no amendments, so I'll ask Senator Peter to make his closing on this bill, and any recommendation he may have.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Once again, Bill 2536OR is part of the plan to build up a reserve program at each of our public safety agencies. These conservation officers are severely undermined and are asked to do a recurring job to protect our island wildlife and marine life with currently only seven officers. The Department of Agriculture has already worked out an agreement with their federal counterparts to pay for this program, so the increase in stipend will not cost our government any additional money, but will provide us with more reservists the department can use to keep our fish and wildlife safe from poachers and the like. The stipend currently paid falls, who fully short of even the current minimum wage, currently paying them $5.95 an hour to patrol our shorelines and our jungles. This increase will make their pay per hour required to receive their stipend at at least $11.90. Even this is short of what we should be paying these brave men and women, but it is a step in the right direction. And collectively, in the increase of stipend, it would help us alleviate some of the overtime, increase enforcement of our laws to protect fish and wildlife, and increase morale. Please join me in awarding this increase to these officers and thank them for the work they are doing, and I humbly ask all my colleagues here to please support Bill 2536OR. Thank you very much. Donklin, Sisus Mossi.
Do you have a recommendation for this bill?
My recommendation is to move Bill 2536OR to the third reading file, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
With the recommendation of the Committee of the Whole, correct?
With the recommendation with the Committee of the Whole.
On that motion, that it be placed on third reading file, hearing, are there any objections? No objection, motion carries. Senator Moylan, you had a motion you wanted to, or a comment you wanted to make?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, motion that we recess till 10 o'clock tomorrow to allow us opportunity to pay our last respects to our former speaker's, former Speaker Mark Forbes' father viewing today. Mr. Chairman.
There's a motion to recess so that the body, if they choose to, to attend the funeral of Speaker Forbes' father, the viewing. There being no objection, we will recess till 10 o'clock tomorrow morning.